Okay, six o'clock. We'll bring the September 25th meeting to order and we will begin with roll call, please.
Walters?
Here.
Black?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Moving on to three, approval of agenda. I'll ask for a motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve, please, sir.
Second.
And roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Item four, we're swearing in police officer Spencer Stover this evening and pleased to be doing that. And I'll ask Chief.
All right, Spencer, you want to come up here? So I'd like to introduce Spencer Stover. He began with us on September 11th and is currently doing field training at the State Police Department. He's a 2013 graduate of DMAC with a criminal justice degree and a 2015 graduate out of Iowa. So we're glad to have him on board. All right, you just want to stand right over here. Place your left hand on this book and then raise your right hand. Just repeat after me. Hi Spencer Stover.
Hi Spencer Stover.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer, the City of Polk City, Iowa.
Discharge all the duty of a police officer.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required.
Congratulations.
Did you have some family to introduce?
Here. I got my father and his wife here, so Paul Stover and Karen. And I've got my brother here, Josh Stover, wife Jordana. My mom was in the back, London, and my wife, Emily Stover, and we brought our kids, Elsie and Sawyer. Well, thank you all for coming.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Welcome. Welcome.
Where are you coming? Are you living in the area or? So I live in Madrid, so.
Okay, okay. I was just curious.
Well, welcome to Polk City. Thank you everybody for supporting us. Thanks, glad to be here.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to item five, which is public hearing. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting. Then the FY 24 and 25 capital improvement plan. When was the notice published?
September 15.
Have we had any written comments received for or against the amendment?
No, sir.
So at this time, we'll request staff to provide a report, please.
I will provide that report for the council's consideration this evening as an amendment to the five-year capital improvement plan, also referred to as the CIP. The city council approved the original five-year CIP on September 14th, 2020. The council has since amended that CIP on April 25th, 2022. Tonight's proposal will be the second amendment to that CIP plan. And the proposed changes are redlined in both the memo and the document tonight. I'm going to read the proposed changes. I'm having some computer issues, it seems like. Okay, so the proposed changes for fiscal year 24. The Parker Lift Station project is going to be proposed to be removed from the current CIP. We've been working with the city engineer on this project and that lift station is not near capacity, so we think that we can push that out to a future five-year CIP. The Van Dorn Third Street improvements, this was going to be an intersection improvement project with making this building a little bit more handicap accessible. That project is being proposed to move to fiscal year 25 and the city council can review and re-discuss that project after the city hall project is complete across the street. East Broadway Street improvements. This includes a trail along East Broadway Street. This proposal is being moved to fiscal year 25. The council kind of decided during last budget season that they wanted to push the trail project for across Army Corps property to connect the Neil Smith to Quick Star. They want to push that up a year and move this one back a year, so that is in the proposed amendment. The regional park facility is being pushed to fiscal year 25. The water tower painting project, we are proposing we remove this from the current CIP. As of right now, the plan is to build a new 1.5 million gallon tank and take down the old water tower, so it would no longer be painted. The proposed amendment for fiscal year 25 is the West Bridge Trail Project, like I had previously mentioned. That project is being bumped up to 24 and those are all of the proposed changes for this evening.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the CIP amendment? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet? Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
So will they move to 5A1, Resolution 2023-109, approving FY 24 and 25 CIP amendment? Motion in a second, please.
So. Second, and I do have a question. So if you, the scheduled projects that are listed for three years that are in the packet, if you did mention them, that they're staying as scheduled?
Yes.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Moving to item six then, public comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Has anyone contacted us about speaking?
Yes, sir.
All right then, we'll move on to item seven, which is the consent items, and I'll ask for a motion to approve in a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Item eight then, business items, A, Crossroads at the Lakes, plat three. Travis, you'll speak to that?
Yeah, is it okay with you guys if I present the accepting of public improvements, the final plat together? So I don't have to make two. So for tonight's consideration, is accepting the public improvements for Crossroads at the Lakes plat three and approval of the Crossroads at the Lakes plat three final plat? Just as a little bit of background, the plat three construction drawings were approved on September 26th, 2022. The city has received and filed maintenance bonds, the amounts of $883,912 for underground utilities and associated services and abutances and $450,766.50 for paving of cluster mailbox pads, sidewalks, ramps, trails, piece, trail ramps and roadway paving, crossroads plat three. Polk City Public Works observed the work and recommends approval and believes that the construction was completed in substantial conformance with the approved construction drawings, suit odds of Polk City code and asks such recommend or acceptance of those. The Crossroads at the Lakes plat, or plat three final plat, as many of you may know, this is the final stage of the Crossroads at the Lakes development. The parkland dedication fee that we collected as part of this final planning process is in the amount of $2,331. The final plat will include and will be recorded with engineering exhibit illustrating MOEs for several lots in the plat that are located near stormwater facilities, both detention basins and swales. And I believe Aaron Olandike is here with the developer, as the developer's engineer. If there's anything I may have missed or you guys have questions?
I don't have anything to add.
I will say that P&amp;Z had a good discussion about this, had no real issues with this either and it was pretty straightforward.
Okay then, we'll move on to item one then, Resolution 2023-113, accepting public improvements for Crossroads at the Lakes plat three. Motion in a second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Then item two, Resolution 2023-114, approving final plat for Crossroads at the Lakes plat three. Motion in a second, please.
Second, and I do have a question. Aaron, do you have a map, like of four, plat three? This is all residential to the north side? Really north, but what is constituting plat three versus the other plats?
I don't have a big.
Oh, you don't?
I have a small, but yeah, it's the remaining lots on the north side, so these streets connect into Grimes Street, connects into Oakford Line, kind of connects all of that neighborhood to the surrounding areas.
Okay, I don't have any concern. I do wonder a little bit if the smaller it is, is why I was asking if it's mostly residential that. I don't know if anybody has the date, only one or two, but it has to go back four or five years.
We started the project in 1617.
Okay. So getting further than I thought. But mostly from your perspective, Mike, good on everything. I know leadership has changed quite a bit at Kimberly. I just want to make sure that with the amount of time that we're as competent as we can be and that they've done everything. We're, because this is it, right? This is final plat on the plat three is?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything's inspected and it was put in as per plan. I mean, that's what I can say. We do know that and at this time, everything's functioning.
Okay.
Rock, if you look at Snyder's memo, there is a picture and it shows plat one, two, and three and it's color coded.
Okay, Peter, are you on? Got it, okay, thank you. That's helpful. Nothing else.
All right, roll call then.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Moving on to 8B then, Resolution 2023-115, approving preliminary plat for Monarch Crossing. Travis?
So for council's consideration tonight, it's a preliminary plat of just east of the previously through Big Creek Ridge preliminary plat. So they're south of East Northside Drive, just east of North Third Street. The development is 47 acres. The developers proposing 54 single-family lots that range from 0.46 acres all the way to 25 acres. There will be a one lot that connects to the East Northside Drive right of way, wraps around the northeast corner of the property and then runs along the east side of the property for a future trail. And there are two outlots for detention basins proposed on site. The future northeast trunk sewer is being shown on the preliminary plat, straddling the eastern boundary of this parcel with the intent being that when the, or the plot of land directly to the east is developed, they would also share some for that northeast trunk sewer. The developers requesting a waiver of your max block length of 1,320 feet, proposing 1,520 foot block length. This is a function of needing to connect with Arbor Avenue that was approved as part of Big Creek Ridge. You guys have already approved a waiver for. And in considering this, these are larger lots, you're seeing are larger lots, we did look at lot loading on that long street and based on a typical 80-foot width of a R1 lot in your city code, we are anticipating, or the developers proposing two less R1 lots that would be proposed on a 1,320-foot street in a standard R1 district. So they're actually putting less load on a longer street. So we, we don't have concerns about that waiver request. Your approval tonight would be subject to the northeast trunk sewer being reviewed in more detail with the construction drawings to make sure that it makes sense and is constructable in the future when the city goes to install that project as well as the signing of a development agreement by the developer for the widening along Northside Drive, similar to Big Creek Ridge, to bring that to a conforming urban section instead of the not firming rural section that firmly sits in. And then the developer would be responsible for requiring all easements for turnarounds and utility steps onto adjacent properties prior to approval of construction drawings, similar to Big Creek Ridge as well. And then Erin Olandike is also the developer's engineer on that project. If she has anything that I may have a lot of doubt, or do you have additional questions?
Why don't you come forward again, Erin?
Okay. Do you have a large board for this?
And I forgot to ask you to identify yourself.
Oh, so Erin Olandike, so the design being changed by address 40 Northwest Urban Dale Drive. So this is kind of. So north is up, so we're connecting off of Northside Drive, coming all the way south, connecting our big bridge, whatever it is. All the sacks that are tensioned here.
So I need to amend my earlier statement on the Crossroads at the Lakes because the P&amp;Z meetings kind of come together sometimes. This was the one I was talking, there was obviously no issue Crossroads at the Lakes as well, but this was the one that I, it talks about for P&amp;Z this last time that was approved. They did discuss the block length, no issues there. Really, the overall sense was this, these are bigger lots than normal, as Travis and Erin mentioned as well. So as we go out of town, it's going to be a nice transition into, from the regular R1 into bigger lots. They'll, a lot more front yard, be a nice development as you move toward it. So no issues, that there was nothing that P&amp;Z was concerned about.
I knew it, I saw you bring it in.
I know, I know.
I mean, 54 lots on 47 acres is the density that I think fits out there, especially with the other development going in at the same time, kind of in the same mode. So yeah, I'm guessing chief, most time the block length is a function of emergency vehicles, which is respected.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Erin.
So we'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-115, approving preliminary plat for Monarch Crossing.
So move. Second.
And roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Moving on then to C, 306 South Third Street, 314th West Wood Street, 305 West Church Street and 314th South Third Street demolition and grading cost in the amount of $140,315.80. Mike?
Thank you for announcing that. I did not want to do that myself. So in front of you tonight, we have some demolition costs, the asbestos removal, demolition of the four properties that were just mentioned that are right up here up the block, the second block that the city has purchased now. We wanted to get this in front of you. We wanted to move forward if we can and this fall, because there's going to be some concrete work that has to happen with the utility of removals. And we wanted to try to get that done before the weather sets in, pushing up against that. So you'll see all the costs here. Public Works is going to pour back the concrete, so that'll be on us. We're also going to seed the lot. If this passes tonight, we'll be doing the seeding of the lots. It depends on if it's going to be this fall or next spring, depending on how we get this pushed forward and if the weather still holds for us on that one. As of right now, we know where the utilities are hooked, water and sewer both, so we have them targeted. The electrical has been disconnected to every house already and the gas is on call to work on that, on disconnection of the gas service. But I don't know, they come and work on one of them and then they laugh, so I don't know what that situation is. But anyway, they will be back here in the next week or so to disconnect all those gas services. Anyway, that's what's in front of you tonight is for all of the, so what you'll see when this is all said and done is it will be a bare lot graded with the dirt that's there, flat enough to mow and that's what we'll have left right there. So that's what it is. And this number will reflect that. The only thing is, is a couple of contractors said, of course, you can't see underground, so if something happens underground, it might be more because of that, but everything else is covered right here. Are there any questions on this one?
And there'll be like a burn in spring from what the memo says.
I might need some help on this one.
Not for these lots, that's for a different lot.
Yeah.
Different address. We did put one, we did put one thing in the memo that I want to bring to your attention. The fire department burned a house over here earlier this spring and they cannot burn another or have another live burn within that vicinity this calendar year. So the fire department is unable to burn any of those four properties this year. But what we've put in the memo is if you would like to reduce the demolition costs a little bit, they could burn down one of the houses in the spring 2024.
Nothing to do with this one. Right, correct. No one of these houses.
If you would like to save some costs on demo, yes, they could do it in the spring 2024, but that would be the earliest.
So I just did have one question. I drive by there and actually did tonight on the way to council meeting because it seems like every time I drive by there, I worry that that retaining wall is going to come down onto the street, the tree with it. And then I don't know what happens with the house, if that comes with that too. What's your, what's your feeling about that retaining?
Yeah, it should come out. That is suspect at best, but I don't believe the house is going to come down because there's a foundation that goes into ground for about four or five feet on that. So I think we're good there, but yeah, the retaining walls are suspect. They're leaning and they're rotting. And it's just that one that you can see there, but there's others in behind the houses that are up blocks to pull back other houses that are up. They're all going to be demolished, of course, but they're leaning as well. And those are made out of pretty much railroad ties.
So I do have some concerns here, but before, so I appreciate your flexibility on what we've asked pretty consistently for you guys to either do or manage a lot of things that aren't day-to-day public stuff. This is yet example of it here. I am $140,000 on an unbudgeted item, it's a lot of money to spend. And so I, I don't know, I guess my preference would be to maybe spread this out a little bit from a cost perspective. I also have concerns with, we, so the plan right now is to have the future police station. We don't have a date and we don't have a funding mechanism for how to do that. So what I think is a debatable point is a, for an undetermined amount of time, is it better to have it as it is with some houses, some issues, retaining walls with some issues? But, but also some, some trees too that unfortunately are probably going to have to come out versus a newly seeded bare lot. And I, I don't say that because I, I guess that's one thing that maybe like to get the neighborhoods in, but I don't know. And of course, they're going to naturally ask how long and like I said, we don't have an answer, but so.
May I answer your question? I cap will tell you from a liability perspective, it's better to have no houses that people can get into and animals and critters and those kinds of things. So that would be an outside service. We have insurance on them, albeit as vacant homes, but that would be the only thing I could tell you from a cost perspective, if there's any risk or liability.
So do we know if there's any premium adjustment with those houses coming down?
They do charge a different, I can't tell you what it is right now, but they do charge a different rate for a home someone lives in versus a vacant home versus a vacant lot.
Yeah, no, I, my concern is not from that standpoint. Those, I think, are part of our, again, I follow the decision to buy those with a plan to use the land down the road and I, that's a, some cost at this point as part of our previous decision. My concern here is now, like I said, the aesthetic adjustment to, to the neighborhood, which again is, is secondary or farther down the line to $140,000 of unbudgeted expense. So when there is, and I asked Chelsea earlier, it's not as flat as the line next to the library that could be, this is a practice field or something in the interim. I don't know, this, I appreciate the, the thought behind putting this in, that probably not going to be any less expensive later than it is now. That's a part of this too. So I, I don't know, I guess my preference would be to, to maybe space this out and get some consultation with the neighbors, but.
I did not put them in, but there was a fairly decent separation between the person that voted 102, 500 for the demolition of the four houses. I can't tell you specifically what it is right now because I don't have it in front of me, but there was considerable amount, I'm talking 20, probably to 30,000 if I remember right, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but between those two and then the third one was even higher than that.
Okay.
So I don't, like you say, I don't know if that price will hold until next summer or whenever you'd like to have this done. But anyway, that's the one that I'm concerned with maybe going up.
So say that again, sorry. So the biggest cost of the 140 is the 102, like you said, and do you think that that could be significant if we demolition the four separately? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, is that if we don't, because on these quotes, they have a 30-day or 60-day expiration date on it. So if we try to do this again, I don't know if that number's going to stay at that, is what I'm trying to say next summer for the four. That's all I'm saying. And I don't know, maybe it will, but we didn't have that down. What I was trying to say was is between the first, the lowest bidder and the second lowest was considerable amount of money. And I'm not sure what his work schedule is if we don't prove that. I just don't know. And the other thing that I would be a little bit concerned with is, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, and I'm sorry to bring you into this, but
Sure.
Jeremy, and I'm sorry to bring you into this, but I believe there was a litter of foxes up there already at the two-story house this spring. And I know there's cats hanging around, and the longer we go, I think you're going to get other critters, to Jenny's point, moving in up there, so just keep that in mind. I'm not saying it's going to happen today, tomorrow, or what have you, but I think as time goes on, abandoned houses will collect those animals.
We'll have to keep them up to building code too, if we're going to enforce that around the city.
Yeah.
And explain again about the the concrete, would there be more expense waiting to demolish that concrete?
Yeah, the concrete is a smaller portion, you're not going to see a big bump in that. You'll probably see a price increase, but public works will be doing the actual pouring back, so you're not going to see anything. It would be just the actual cost. So, and that's a small enough, I believe, here.
So the items that.
Five thousand, so it won't go up considerably from that, just just the cost.
Sorry, the eight items that you've got listed, those are all outside firms that'll be doing all of that, asbestos, utility abandonment, erosion control, disconnection of central area, cement, arena, concrete, or asbestos removal and demolition.
Correct. Yeah, we didn't list our stuff in there.
Anything else, counsel? Oh, go ahead.
I would, I would like to move forward, all your points are valid. But anyway, I would like to move forward just because of that fact that we we want to get done and try to get it yet this fall. It will look different, I will give it that.
And what do you think, neighbor-wise? Has there been any calls or asks from neighbors?
I've just received complaints about the condition of the home on the northwest lot, but we've received those prior to us even owning them.
And that's, that is the status, those valid complaints, I don't want to be dismissive of those, but that's whether we, I mean, we talked about it a hundred times at this point, and part of the reason why we're doing what we're doing there, and so I am excited to get to that point again, and I fully respect your perspective, Mike. Is it worth one hundred and forty thousand dollars of unbudgeted? To me, that's where I think I'm going to land, because I, again, I don't know what the neighbors are going to prefer. It probably is going to get more expensive, and there are for sure going to be hopefully marginal, but costs for us to to carry these properties, as it probably will be, you know, to seed and do some other stuff if we go this route, but. Again, one hundred forty K.
One hundred forty K is coming from where?
So there is a spreadsheet in your packet, you go to, there you go. All of the facility projects are being funded by twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three issuance and local option sales tax. So we do have the funding available for the demolition of the homes. I think that we've known our costs were going to be a little bit higher than what the city hall project was bid out at, at what the fire station was bid out at. We prepared for this, but I felt that it was very important for the council to fully understand how expensive it is to demolish full block homes, and that's why it's on the council agenda tonight.
So it's not unbudgeted, just not identified specifically project-wise? Is that a first?
It is, it is an unbudgeted expense, but we planned for it financially or had some idea that we were going to have additional expenses outside of the contracts that we've entered into.
So are you saying, when you say planned for it, as we have the essentially borrowing capacity, the GO bonds to use it as part of that?
We do have the funding, yes. We have funding capacity through the bonds that we've sold and local option sales tax.
Okay, so that's another piece, then carrying the debt and interest for this money will add to the cost as well.
I, I think that the neighbors, if you would ask them, I don't think they want to see them making houses, they'd rather see a vacant lot, empty houses sitting there for any length of time. At least I know, I look at it, how would I feel if it was across the street from me? That's the way I'd feel. Only thing I can say about this, all the stuff that's listed here, we need to make sure we get everything paid for. Going to have to closely, be closely monitored. Erosion control, the big ones, they seem to be down. Now, where where this is, that's what would cause problems down the road, so we need to make sure we get what we pay for. Asbestos removal, maybe there is asbestos, maybe there isn't. I sure can't tell. Well, that's what we have the testing for. We come in and, yeah, we trust them, but that's what they told us it's going to cost to remove what's there in the two houses. So I honestly thought we would probably have it in all four, but two of the houses are are clean, which save money.
Anything from Mandy or Jeff? I know Mandy's on delay.
Nothing for me.
There she is. So what I think we'll do is we'll move ahead with item C and ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll, we'll do, roll call both. So I'll read it again for the record. Three oh six South Third Street, three hundred and fourteenth West Wood Street, three oh five West Church Street, and three hundred and fourteen South Third Street demolition and grading cost in the amount of one hundred forty thousand dollars, one hundred and forty, three hundred and fifteen, eighty. And so I'll ask for a motion and a second, please.
So move.
Second. And roll call.
Anderson. Walters.
Yes.
DeVorec.
Yes.
Sarchet. Vogel. Yes.
Moving on to item D then, first reading of ordinance twenty-two-three dash ninety-six hundred, amending chapter sixty-nine parking regulations, winter parking. Chief?
So this is a proposal to basically update the language in our snow. What we currently have in place, noticed over the years, is causing a lot of confusion and misunderstanding, misinterpretation of how it's written. This is basically just to clean it up, makes it easier for us to enforce if needed, and a lot easier for our community to understand how when it goes into effect and what's expected.
Sorry, what is, what is the actual change?
The whole thing.
Okay, so this is a new paragraph?
Yeah.
Taking out.
Take the old one out, put this one.
Okay.
Motion, ask for a motion, please.
So. Second.
A second, and then because I want to make sure I read it for the record. This motion is on the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-three dash ninety-six hundred, amending chapter sixty-nine parking regulations, winter parking. We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Sarchet. Vogel. Yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeVorec.
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
E is second reading of ordinance twenty-two-three dash ninety-four hundred, amending provisions pertaining to liquor licenses and cigarette and tobacco permits. A motion and a second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
DeVorec.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Vogel. Yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
And then moving on to F, second reading of ordinance twenty-two-three dash ninety-five hundred, amending provisions pertaining to fiscal management. A motion and a second, please. Roll call.
Sarchet. Vogel. Yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeVorec.
Yes.
Item number nine is mayor proclamation. I do certify or proclaim October eighth through the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as fire prevention week. It should work to support that, that's for sure. Item ten, reports and particulars, we'll begin with staff. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, I want to invite everybody to Fall Fest this coming weekend, three to seven, on Saturday, the thirtieth, on the square. It's going to feel more like summer, if you've looked at the forecast, so no reason to not come, so we'll have fun for the whole family. See you then.
Great, Jason, thank you. Any, what else? Good, okay, we'll move on to Chelsea.
I just want to go on the record to say that we do still have funding available for the citywide soil quality restoration project. We've received about ninety-two applications to date. We think we may have funding available for up to one hundred and forty, one hundred and fifty homes, so if you know anybody that would like to participate, get word out, as we're still accepting applications, we continue to do so.
Council members?
I want to add on to what Chelsea just said, and I had a friend who doesn't live in this town, just had this thing done, hired by a private dealer.
So I was going to add two on last Wednesday metro waste authority meeting that I sit on, so so this came up because that's where the compost that they're using typically comes from or partially, at least partially comes from. And our first program, which they had referenced as being the biggest in the metro area, and so therefore the communities that are served by MWA, but is, they're using as the model when other communities go to MWA to reference this and happening a lot of places elsewhere, so good to see that. I think it was all through staff, the innovation of, and I know I had expressed frustration with one bit the first time around, that is what it is, it's out of control, but I enjoy in those collaborative regional meetings when we get referenced in a positive, so.
Anything else from council?
Yeah, I wanted to just point out the CIP amendment, what it, what it really does, and the main things with that is moving up the trail projects and taking out things painting and fire of the water tower, and there's another, oh, the, just some of the concrete and work around here, but putting that to the next year to be able to get that trail project continued to move forward from High Trestle to to Neil Smith, because that's one of the priorities that we have, so we're making a way for that. Those things that we don't need to have, money's going to work on that connectivity, which is very important. And also regarding the demo of the lots, I a hundred percent appreciate where Rob's coming from. I looked at that as a safety issue, also from what Ron said, I always put myself in the shoes of the person living across the block and think of, yeah, I probably wouldn't let that for another year myself either, so I, I think there's, there's definitely not, the safety issue in and of itself is something that we need to consider when, when spending money that may or may not be completely budgeted or available, so I just wanted to put a little bit of light upon that as well.
Okay, and I don't have anything to add, so we will move on to eleven, ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Before that, I'd like to say, the candidates meeting coming up, I urge everybody watching, everybody here to go and listen and hear what our candidates for the seats have to say and participate in this. I talked to a lady today who's going to go to our new, what do you call it, our schooling for being involved with the city.
The citizens academy.
That's what I was trying to say, very excited about it. I think she'll be interested, maybe can get more involved in some other city stuff. Sounds good. Having said that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned until October ninth.